What'd he say?
If you're willing and able, would you be so kind as to stand for the invocation? And I present to you the police chaplain Reverend Ralph Eastwood. And if you would, remain standing for your place to the flag, please. Reverend.
Right before we have the invocation, I just want to make a statement of praise. I wish to thank the board for their decision to reward the public safety for their hard work, loyalty, and dedication in keeping the citizens of Henry County safe during these most difficult times. I want you to know that many citizens support our public safety and recognize they do what they do for the love of job and not for pay. I personally witnessed the morale of many of these men and women soar with this public safety adjustment, which gets them to the level they should be at and rewards them for their expertise in the field. I thank you, I thank them, and I thank all of those connected to Henry County. God bless you for what you've done for the public servants. May we pray. Heavenly Father, we are thankful that this board and the leaders here recognize the need of prayer before we conduct business. I'm thankful, Lord, that they recognize the wisdom from the very oracles of deity, Lord, that you give us as Christians that'll lead us in the right way. I thank you, Lord, for their concern for this county and for concern for the people in this county, that they want the best for them. And I thank you for each and every one of them that give their best, week in and week out, month in and month out, so that our county can be a better place to live. Would you continue to guide them? Would you continue to bless them? Would you continue to bless our county, that it could be safer and safer and a better place to be for people to come in and do their business and live here? And, Lord, we thank you for the days that we have, each day that we have to live. You said rejoice in these days that we have, Lord, and you say each day that we have is an opportunity to uplift your name, live for you, and glorify the purpose and the reason that we're here today. So, Lord, may they conduct their business tonight with the leadership of your Holy Spirit and bless them and meet their needs in every way, for we pray and ask that in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and access as our own. I'd like to call the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM, meeting Tuesday, August 16, 2016, to order. Acceptance of the agenda. What I would like to do is, by request of Ms. Griffith, is remove item seven. Item seven, request to address the Board of Commissioners by Ms. Griffith regarding mail box ordinances. I'd like to remove that. Second thing, on the consent item, before I read that later, I would like to move, under consent county manager budget, I would like to move that over to 14B. And the reason being, I will make some comments on that, so we'll make that 14B. And since this won't be unanimous, it can't be consent. And then also, I would like to remove 14A. 14A is a resolution amended fiscal year 2016-2017, Budget Fifth, Public Safety Roof, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I want to give the board an opportunity at this time here to amend, further amend it, or add to, delete, before we move in that direction. If not, will somebody move, we approve the budget as amended?
So move.
Have a motion, District Three.
Second.
Second District, four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Public comments. Citizens, do we have anybody for public comments?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any. Let me make this announcement at this time here. It normally says citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. We have several people understand that want to be heard on an agenda item. And what I'm going to do, we're going to move down to later, 12, stormwater. There's going to be a resolution rescinding Resolution 16-117 regarding authorization of $7,000. I want to ask the board at that time if they will move to allow public input for not to exceed three minutes from each person, each citizen, on that particular issue. Now, if y'all want to amend the budget again, to add that, so be it, or we can do it piece by piece when we get to that.
I'm okay when we get to that.
Okay. Okay. We don't have any public comments, so now we would recognize the Board of Commissioners at Henry County Community Gardens, Ms. Melissa Golden. You have 15 minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name, please.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Golden. This is Fred.
Could you turn the mic a little bit closer to you? It's on, right?
Okay.
Okay, we got you now.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
My name is Melissa Golden. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. This is Fred Conrad. I am the president of Community Gardens of Henry County. He is our past president and current treasurer. We are here this evening to ask for the county's assistance. We have a history of wonderful gardens on county property over in Heritage Park and Windy Hill Park. We've had a great relationship with a donation garden down at Kupahatcha Reservoir. We've been running these gardens successfully in Henry County for a number of years now. The first garden was built in 2004 over at Heritage. Earlier in our tenure, the county was able to provide some financial support to the organization. That support dwindled with the economic downturn. And we've continued fundraising efforts, and we are basically here tonight to ask for some help again. I've included a budget, and I would really like to take your questions, understand you've heard this presentation before. So, we need your help. We do a good job with the gardens, but we do need some financial support to keep them going.
I don't think you're going to get any questions at this moment.
Yeah, we just got it.
Yeah.
I didn't test to review it. Okay. Well, I would just add, so we've been raising money on our own to administer these gardens and to provide this service to the residents of Henry County. And, you know, at this point, we've reached a challenge, and we're just at a critical point where we would just really appreciate your support in getting us through this little bit of time.
Thank you.
Our contact information is on the top of that spreadsheet if you have additional questions. You can reach out to us.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Public safety, a resolution authorizing acceptance of two 2013 Dodge Chargers from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety for the Henry County Police Department Heat Unit. The technology service, a resolution approving renewal of an annual software lease for the maintenance agreement with Micropack Global Incorporated. I will give the board an opportunity to add to or delete this, these two items, or add to it, whichever you'd like to do. So if not, somebody move, we approve the consent-agended items as read.
So move.
Have a motion, District Three.
Second.
Second District, five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Public safety. Henry County Police Department, resolution authorizing the purchase of two unmanned aircraft vehicle UAV training qualifications and accountments for the police department using federal asset forfeitures and seizure funds accounts. Major Keith Goen and Captain Simmons.
How's everybody this evening? Good to see you.
Greetings.
I just wanted to introduce you. This is Captain Chuck Simmons. He's in charge of our Special Operations Division. Pretty much all of the things that are other than uniform patrol, he's in charge of. So he's your canine, he's your motors, and also any of the other special assignments that we have that come up. You recognized him a couple of months ago in reference to being nationally recognized as a crisis intervention specialist for the county as well. Tonight, he's responsible solely for creating this resolution, as well as doing the research and documentation on policy and program regarding it. So I wanted you to have a little bit of information about him as we go forward, so you'll see how much that he's dedicated to the program, and he'll be available for questions as well. The resolution before use for two unmanned aerial aircraft vehicles, the training qualifications and accoutrements for the police department to use federal asset forfeiture and seized funds for this purchase. 2015, the department handled 10 incidents of critical missing or missing persons with mental health issues, expending resources from Henry County, as well as surrounding aerial support from other agencies. The department, along with several other agencies, spent over 500 man-hours searching for an escaped prisoner as well. Twenty-seven fatality accidents and 29 victims occurred in 2015, those resulted in roadways being closed for long periods of time as well. Henry County Police Department has spent a multitude of man-hours, as you can see, and resources conducting these searches and investigations, with aerial support being available by surrounding agencies in Spalding County, Clayton, and DeKalb. Sometimes getting support is slow and sometimes not even feasible. The Henry County Police Department has looked at other resources to fill the gap for aerial support in attempting to reduce man-hours while on these scenes. In today's society, departments have focused on technology to assist in these searches and investigations, and this technology would be aerial support. Henry County Police Department has turned to unmanned aerial vehicle RX, inexpensive, easy to maneuver, and quicker to deploy than helicopters. The police department is requesting to use $18,661.16 from federal seized asset forfeiture funds to purchase two UAV unmanned aerial vehicles. In addition, we have policies and procedures that will be in place prior to the implementation. These all fall in line with state as well as federal guidelines and laws, and the training that would be provided for these as well. If you have any questions for me, we're both available for this, but we wanted to do this presentation for you.
Anybody have any comments or questions? I yield for District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. Real quick, just to overview these things. Will both of them be equipped with FLIR? FLIR? Will they be equipped?
Just one. The more expensive one's FLIR.
Okay. And the other one just going to have the video capability?
Correct. And secondly, I mean, the reason for the second one, too, is not only just to, when we go into the training and the practice, I'm definitely to use it, but I didn't want to waste that just for that as well. It does give us a fairly decent camera that we can use for as a traffic access and even crime scene. And we can use it north and south if we have two things kind of going on at the same time. So it kind of gives us two different, several different things to kind of do with that.
Okay. All right. One question.
In addition, Commissioner, also the FLIR capability is a specific type of FLIR. We weren't going to go too into detail with the nuances of it, but just to let you know, it's real-time FLIR. So what we're seeing is something that we're actually seeing on the ground. It won't be something where, when we get there, it won't be there. It's real-time.
So it's linked up and comes back down?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Okay.
I yield for District One.
They're battery-operated, correct?
It is. Both of them's going to come with multiple batteries and multiple chargers, actually, so we can actually bring it down and come right back up with it. There again, a reason for having two, so we can kind of interact with them that way. We've actually done that with some other situations. When we did the active shooter drill here, we actually had one up to test kind of that situation, to show how that could be used, and it actually worked very well, actually.
How much flight time?
I'm sorry?
How much flight time?
Flight time on the larger one is 28 minutes, I'm sorry, 25 minutes. The smaller one's 28 minutes. And like I said, we have four or five batteries, but the one thing that it can do that a helicopter truly can't do is it can be put in one place and set there for the whole 28 minutes. If it happens to lose touch with the controller, it'll automatically come back to the last GPS point where it took off from, so you don't have a chance of losing it. There's hope in this.
Thank you.
Is there a possibility of sea concerns?
There are, and the federal government, as well as local, has addressed that in the laws. What we've done is we've integrated every bit of that into our policy, as well as the training. Our intent is not to use it for the offensive part, but the defensive part, going out and finding the folks. If they were to use it for anything that would ever have an evidentiary value whatsoever, a search warrant would be obtained prior to doing that.
Truly also, our Georgia law actually helped prevent that as well. 1611, 60, 61, and 63 involves eavesdropping, even Peep and Tom, and so forth like that to kind of address those issues as well. So definitely, in implementing this in an investigative situation, will definitely require a search warrant.
So we tried to, in advance, the coming before you today, we tried to create a policy that addressed any issues that we might have before we even ask you for the purchase itself, that way when we go forward with the training, we've already got a plan together of what we can and can't do.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Now, have a resolution in the book, Board of Commissioners authorizing the purchase of two unmanned aircraft vehicles for training qualification and accountability for the police department using federal asset forfeit and seize funds. It's moving in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion, District One.
Second.
Second District, four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Henry County Fire Department, resolution approving the purchase of two Pierce Stock Saber Pumpers for Henry County Fire Department. Chief Willis. Greetings.
I would like to request that you approve the resolution approving purchase of two Pierce Stock Saber Pumpers for Henry County Fire Department.
For these were the questions we asked you last time we were splitting them up. These are some vehicles that are available on special purchasing. They were demos, if you will. They're down in mid-Florida, God's country, as they might say in some places. Unique purchasing opportunities that addresses some very unique demands right now. And we're down in, when I got the messages about our reserve vehicles and I talked to Mr. Jody Swords, we are in critical need for to get two pumpers right quick. We would have bought four if we'd had the money, so that's what the request was for. We presented it last time, and this is authorization. Go ahead and do the purchase.
The last time, the issue was it didn't go through purchasing? So has that been done?
These were all squared away. Got a thumbs up back over there. We were confirming that the purchase was there, and it was a unique, got it pretty quick.
I think the issue last time was about the ambulances, the remounting of the ambulances, and that's going through purchasing now.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, questions? I'll yield for District Four.
I haven't. I don't see the schematics on the pumpers. Are these what we need? I mean, they're going to do the job?
Yes, sir. They meet the specifications, our current specifications.
Current specs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I'd like to know how many gallons of water does these truck hold?
1,500 gallons.
1,500. Okay.
1,500 gallons. Anybody else have any questions? If not, does somebody want to consider approving the resolution to purchase these two pumpers?
So move.
Have a motion, District Five.
Second.
Second District, three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Public hearing, resolution requesting to abandon and declare surplus of portion of South Bethany Road right-of-way for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Mr. Stroud, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Tonight, this is a request to abandon and declare surplus of portion of South Bethany Road right-of-way, as shown on the attached plat marked Exhibit A, and more particularly described on the plat as the area in the amount of 30,750 square feet or .706 acres. South Bethany Road, as part of a SLOSS project, was realigned to the east of the old gravel roadbed, leaving a section of the right-of-way to the west of the required right-of-way for the realigned and paved South Bethany Road. The area requested to be abandoned and declared surplus has no longer served the general traveling public. This abandonment has been publicly advertised in the Henry Herald on August 3 and August 10 of 2016, and all adjoining property owners have been notified by certified mail. I'd ask that you would abandon and declare this right-of-way, old right-of-way surplus.
Anybody have any comments or questions? This right here constitutes a public hearing, and I will open the floor up for 10 minutes to total, if anybody would like to get up and speak for or against, or make any comments they would like on the abandonment of this right-of-way. So if you would, come to the podium, give your name, and totally, you'll have 10 minutes. I state again, this constitutes a, this requires a public hearing, and I'm saying again, if you've got any comments or questions, please come to the podium and give your name, and you'll have up to 10 minutes. Haven't seen none, heard none. I declare that the public hearing portion of this has been met. Do we have any commissioners that like to consider approving the resolution?
So move.
I have a motion, District One.
Second.
Second District, three, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Correction, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution authorizing the sale of certain real property for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Wade, again.
Thank you again, sir. The Board of Commissioners just heard the abandonment and declaration of surplus of property for a portion of South Bethany Road right-of-way. Tonight, it was marked in Exhibit A. You have a similar exhibit on this. Since the abandonment declaration was approved, this request is to authorize the sale of the declared surplus property shown on Exhibit A per OCGA 32-7-3 and 32-7-4 subsequent to the county's receipt of the appraisal. The area in question available to be disposed of is 30,750 feet or .71 acres, and is highlighted on the attached plat marked Exhibit A. The different colors shaded or hatched areas represent portions of the right-of-way that are subject to be sold to each adjoining owner and/or to the previous owner, as in the case of the hatch parcels 4A and 4B. The county is in the process of having an appraisal done on this property in question. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is all the contiguous property owners amenable to take this back?
I know two, I know two of the parcel, parcel number one and parcel number two. Those two gentlemen have been the most excited about the opportunity to reacquire this property. If you'll notice, 4A and 4B, the smaller hatched areas, that property actually did belong to Mr. Bowles across the street. It will be offered to him first, but we went ahead and anticipated that he would not have too much of an interest in .03 and .02 acres coming back to him. So we went ahead and divided that up to where it could be distributed to both parcel one and parcel two.
Okay, so what I'm understanding here, parcel one is going to get parcel 4B.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Parcel two is amenable to parcel 4A.
Correct.
And parcel, whatever it is, I can't read it, the blue bricks, they would get that part?
Three. Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Just for the purpose of the public, would you put this sheet up?
Yes.
What it amounts to, we realigned a road, and we squeezed it in and straightened the curve out, so consequently, the old road base used to go where you see the blue and the green. And now, when we rehabilitated the road, we somewhat made a 35 mile an hour optimum curve, I guess that's what it is. So it's only fair that, obviously, the county doesn't have any use for that, and it would pretty well landlock the people that own the land in there somewhat. So I just wanted to show that for the public. So having said that, we have a resolution in the book. Somebody move, move in that direction.
Move to the front.
Have a motion, District Four. Second District, one, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution authorizing a project agreement between Henry County, Georgia, and the PATH Foundation for the Panola Mountain Greenwood. Mr. Stroud, again.
Thank you, sir. Henry County and PATH have previously agreed to construct a multi-use trail between Austin Road Middle School and Panola Mountain State Park. This was a master agreement to build trails dated all the way back on November 1 of 2011. In the original agreement, the county would provide $50,000 worth of in-kind services. There was one transportation enhancement grant in the amount of $700,000 that would provide additional funding with the remainder of the project cost-sharing funded by PATH. PATH's consultant has obtained preliminary plans and right-of-way plan approval, and has also provided an updated cost estimate in the amount of $1,865,000. The original estimate that was projected while the project was in concept phase was $928,000. PATH has asked the county to assist in coming up with the additional funds. The county with PATH's assistance was able to obtain from GDOT to move $435,600 of funding for a multi-use trail on the county park off Jonesboro Road to this project. In addition, PATH is now asking the county to provide $157,400 in contributions and/or in-kind services in the construction phase, as well as $211,000 in the pre-construction phase that includes right-of-way acquisition. PATH will provide a total of $361,000 in funding. Additional funds needed come from the two TE grants in a total of $1,135,600, creating to the grand total of $1,865,000. This request is for the chairman to be able to sign the agreement that details the cost-sharing between Henry County and the PATH organization. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Anybody got any comments or questions?
For an agreement between the county and the PATH Foundation, so they can go ahead and move forward with right-of-way acquisition?
Well, we're already going forward with the right-of-way acquisition now. What we wanted to do there, PATH sent us a one-page agreement that just said we will share in the costs with this, with Henry County. We met with our legal counsel, and it didn't feel like it was in the best interest of the county to sign such an open, one-ended page document. And we crafted an agreement that really detailed what happens if we run over this projected 1.8 million, what happens if we run under it.
But most of our contribution would be in-kind, plus the amount that we approved a few months back?
It'll be in cash considerations. We've already accounted for the $211,000 in this year's budget. We will need, based off of the new estimate, to be able to come up with a $157,400. But because of the length of the project, we can capitalize that in next year's budget. So we're good for everything that we would have to consider this year.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I yield for District Four.
Wade, the concern I have, looking at this, is the county on the hook for paying for the right-of-way? And I ask this because we all know, and District Five knows very well, right-of-way costs seem to be going up, up, up. And I don't want to get into an open thing where we're paying for the right-of-way, and before you know it, we're, you know, 211 in, and now we're 500 in, a million in. Where's our contract with the PATH Foundation? Are we locked in at this number? Or is it open?
Well, that's what we're trying to establish with this agreement, is what that looks like. We're locked in currently on the $1,865,000.
Right.
And what we wanted to make sure that we did was, is that anything above that was a 50/50 split between Henry County and PATH. Likewise, if it came in under that, we wanted to be able to redistribute the money back to the Likewise, if it came in under that, we wanted to be able to redistribute the money back to the PATH Foundation as well, that there was, for whatever reason, a god miracle of it being under that number.
So, in essence, this is a little bit open-ended then. If, if it goes over the one point eight or our contribution with right-of-way acquisition, which Commissioner Holmes and I are very familiar with how that goes, then we're on the hook for it.
We're on the hook for a fifty-fifty split, according to this agreement. So PATH still has to obviously sign this and agree to it as well.
When did they do the appraisals on the?
We just recently got the appraisals in, and, and we are in contact with Ms. Didi Hunt, who SPOSS uses to go forward with the right-of-way acquisition.
Okay, all right, that's my only question.
Any questions? The only comment I would have was, we need to hurry up and, and get this thing started and finish it, because, as you well know, it started out being seven hundred thousand dollars a path. And in-kind, or a contribution from the county is going to be fifty thousand dollars worth of in-kind. So that would be a hundred, that'd be seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now, in, in the course of time, we lollygagged around, and now they design it and all that, but when the price increased, we found out that the four hundred and thirty-some odd thousand, four thirty-five, that GDOT paths for the Nash Farm, we couldn't comply with the PATH Foundation, so through negotiation, we got GDOT to, to approve us transferring that four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars over to this pathway. Now, having said that, because of all this, the reason I think we need to hurry up and get through with it is, right now, it's already one point eight six five million.
Yes, sir.
So the, the longer we wait, it seems like the, the higher it gets, so. Is, would this be the last time that you have to come before us to, to complete this project?
In the words of my grandmother, "Good Lord willing, and the creek don't rise, this is the last time."
Okay, okay. I yield the floor to District One?
Perhaps it's going to be.
Commissioner Moss, I'm not exactly sure what the, what the length of this is. All, all I know is the logical terminology from Austin Middle School to Pinola Mountain. I'm sure maybe Commissioner Holmes may know that, but I, I don't know that information off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Started on, on building the actual path?
We've got, we, we're in the process of a sixty-day window where we're trying to complete the right-of-way negotiation and acquisition phase of the project. That's why we've gone ahead and started on it. Really, the, the, the holdup for us at this point to begin actual construction is going to be getting this agreement with PATH in place. But like I said, we wanted to go ahead and, and go through the right-of-way acquisition phase of the project, because we didn't want to be the holdup or the fly in the ointment, so to speak, from getting this project ready to be shovel-ready.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? We have a resolution now authorizing the chairman to sign a project agreement between the Henry County, Georgia, and the PATH Foundation for the Pinola Mountain Greenway for Trail Project. Somebody want to move that direction?
So moved.
Have a motion District Five?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. That's the last time we're going to have to vote for this, right?
Yes, sir. I hope so. Thank you.
Okay, we got, we got it on record.
Yes, we, for my, my neighbors over on Green Circle, can you tell me how that traffic study's coming?
Yes, sir, I talked with Kenny Morris this afternoon, and we're going to go ahead and get the traffic counters put back out. I don't know if it'll be this week, but it'll be next week at the latest.
Yeah, let's wait till school gets back in and get this one more time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Resolution approving the budget amendment and awarding the bid for construction of Fire Station Number Sixteen in McDonough, Georgia, using the budgeted splash fund. Mr. Birchhalter, good evening.
Chairman Commissioners, good evening. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOSS whole referendum, which included funds for a new Fire Station Sixteen in McDonough, Georgia. McDonough, Georgia is the mailing address for clarification. The physical location of the station will be in the Kellytown area. The purchasing department solicited bids for the construction of Fire Station Sixteen and posted bid number sixteen dash sixty-four on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Eleven vendors submitted bids. Commissioner, attached to the resolution, you'll see the bid tabulation of the eleven bidders. The most responsive low bid came from Tommy Gibson Builders of Warner Robbins, Georgia, in the amount of two million two hundred and eighty-two thousand. A budget amendment is necessary transferring six hundred thousand from the SPOSS four calendar year twenty seventeen, District Four Pro- Project Mosley Park to the SPOSS four calendar year twenty seventeen countywide Fire Station Sixteen account. Staffs recommended approval of the budget amendment and the award of the bid.
Anybody have any comments or questions? District Four?
Thanks so much for bringing this up, Ron, and let me, let me just go explain to the public real quick why this is so important right now. With the advent of Google, how the insurance companies decide how far you are from a fire station, it used to be as the crow flies, and now with the advent of Google, they can actually do road miles. So in my district, I have citizens that actually have homeowner's insurance that is three times what it used to be ten years ago. And it, it's really hitting them in the pocketbook pretty hard. And I'm glad to see this coming up. I'm glad to see this in the Kellytown area, and this is actually going to help out the park as well. This station's going to be right in front of Bud Kelly Park, and these firefighters will actually be able to keep an eye on the park, keep it from being vandalized. They will be opening, shutting the gates, keeping, making sure, you know, nobody's up to no good out there. So it's a wonderful thing, wonderful thing for the district. Glad to see this moving through. Of course, the question I get, when are we going to start, and when's it going to be finished?
Completion July twenty seventeen.
Gotcha. And ribbon cutting we should be having in the next few weeks, I'm guessing, and then?
Commissioner, I'd like to go ahead and, and what normally what we'll do on some of the, as far as the ribbon cutting, if you, some of the ribbon, you'll notice a lot of the grading work has already been done, okay? I'd like to get it graded, like to get the silt fence up, like to get the site cleaned up, okay, so when we have a ribbon cutting, so it's going to be a little bit longer than that before, but yeah, here soon, we'll have the, we'll, we'll get it started, and then we'll have the ribbon cut.
Excellent, excellent. We appreciate your work on this, Ron. Thank you.
District One?
Hey, Ron, when is Station Two going to be completed?
Station Two completion is, I want to say the end of November, the first of December, Commissioner. And, and again, I, that's close, and I'll get you the exact date. I'm just, we have four of them under construction right now, so I just, I want to make sure I'm giving you valid information. But as you can see, the station is, it's up out of the ground, the trusses are set, all the siding, they're going to start putting the siding and the brick on next week, so it's, it's progressing very well.
Yes, by the other day, it's looking good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? District Three?
What is the price of this fire station based on the other fire stations? Have you seen an increase in price?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, the last, and I'll give you an example. The contractor that we were, this Tommy Gibson Builders, we, we awarded Station Number Fourteen to them. If you remember, when I came to the board, for all four fire stations, they are basically identical. Now, there's a little bit of tweaking as far, but, and, and we got a better deal by putting them all, so they're identical, other than the site work. Station Fourteen with the same contractor was one point nine million. The same station with the same contractor's gone up to two, almost two point three.
I yield the floor to District Four?
Wanted to put one more thing out there for the public, so they'll know. In Bud Kelly Park, we have two point two miles of trails, and working also with the Fifth District, who's putting in the path, we're actually purchasing, I guess it's a gator, if you will, with SPOSS money that has a board or something on there, so we can get out on the paths. Is that correct?
Commissioner, I met with Chief Johnson yesterday afternoon to, to give the specifications on the Kubota and the slide-in unit, the slide-in unit that goes in the back. Will have a, a reservoir for fire suppression, and it also has a place for a stretcher, okay, so this, this could go back on the, the eight-foot wide trails in case there's an incident in the back. Initially, we're going to take, again, we're going to be procuring that pretty soon now. We're going to take, we're going to put it on a trailer, and eventually, it will be housed at Station Sixteen.
Okay, awesome. It will service Commissioner Holmes' pass as well, as I understand it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because there've been some questions on how we're going to service those with our?
And, and just for your information, we got in touch with Rockdale County, which some of these paths are going through Rockdale County. That's where we've got the specifications for the AT, for the vehicle, so we can get back and we can service the same thing that they're doing in the paths.
All right, just to clarify this, with SPOSS funds, so. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I yield the floor back to District Four.
Chairman, I happily yield, I move to approve, sorry.
Have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution awarding a bid for materials and field testing services for annual contract. Romero, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and board members. The purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for materials and field testing services for an annual contract, bid number seventeen dash oh two. Seven sealed bids were received and reviewed. The lowest unit bid price is from Construction Materials Services, Inc. Funding for materials and fields, field testing services is available in the individual project accounts. Staff recommends awarding the bid for materials and field testing services for the annual contract to Construction Materials Services, Inc. The contract may be renewed for two additional one-year term periods. This also could be used by county DOT and any other department that will need some testing and material services.
Anybody have any comments or question? Not, does somebody move? We approve the resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for material and field testing services for annual contract. So moved. Have a motion District Three?
Zitting.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution approving award of the interchange justification report for the new interchange on Interstate Seventy-five and SR one fifty-five.
Yes, Chairman, SPOSS four was approved by voters in November of two thousand and thirteen. The new interchange on I seventy-five south of Sierra one fifty-five is an approved SPOSS four project. Purchasing department issued a request for proposals, RFP number sixteen dash sixty. Three proposals were received and reviewed by committee of Henry County Planning and Engineering Staff Professionals. The committee reviewed all submitted, submitted proposals, and all proposals were scored and ranked. Pond and Company provided a fee for Interstate Seventy-five interchange justification in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Funding for the IGR is available in the project account. Staff recommends approval of this IGR for the new interchange on I seventy-five south of Sierra one fifty-five to Pond and Company in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. I'll take any?
Question? District Three?
Rocky, this is actually the second step. Is this correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
We've got to go through one more step after this.
Right, the first step was the feasibility study. This is the second step, the IGR. Once this is completed, then we'll go into the design phase, which eventually will be construction.
Any further discussion? Does somebody want to move to approve the resolution as just read? You do? Okay, District One made a motion, here's Second. Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so moved. Resolution awarding a bid for construction of thirteen bridge and culvert repairs located in Henry County and approving budget amendments. Mr. Romero, again.
Yes, Chairman, SPOSS four was approved by the voters in November of two thousand and thirteen. The SPOSS management department combined all district bridge and culvert repairs into one contract bid in order to receive a better competitive bid prize. The purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for the bridge and culvert repairs, bid number seventeen dash oh one, for the construction of thirteen bridges and culvert repairs in Henry County. On the overhead, you can see all the, all five districts and thirteen projects, bridges and culverts. Five sealed bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is one million sixteen thousand twenty-one dollars and four cents from Baldwin Paving Company. A budget amendment is needed for the Hampton over Indian Creek culvert repair in District Two in the amount of forty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. Funding for the budget amendment is available in the District Two Hampton over Tawalaga River in the amount of thirty-two thousand, and in the Jonesboro over Walnut Creek in the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. A budget, budget amendment is also needed for the Daily Mill over Walnut Creek, which is a bridge repair in District Three in the amount of six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Funding for the budget amendment is also available in the District Three Oak Grove over Walnut Creek in the amount of six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Combining all thirteen projects into one contract, the county will save approximately six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in the district's bridge and culvert repairs. Staff recommends award of the bid to Baldwin Paving Company and the budget amendments as stated. In addition to this resolution, also authorize the county manager or his designated to approve change orders less than fifty thousand. I'll take any questions.
Anybody got any questions or comments? District Three?
Rocky, this is thirteen bridges. What kind of timeframe are we looking at to complete all these bridges?
We provided ten months for this. There's a lot of, like I said, there's thirteen out of them. There's some are minor repairs, some are big repairs. There's one in District One where the wing wall is broken. There's some that you have to excavate the, the piles and encase them in concrete. So just because of all the different things that we have to do, we, we provided that ten months. If it's shorter, we'll definitely take that, but I think ten months, there should be plenty of time to complete this.
So, yeah. Anybody else have any comments or question? If not, this is, covers five districts. Somebody move in a direction to approve the resolution.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Before we move into the next item, I would like to ask the board to consider opening the public comment floor up for this next item, and allow any citizen like to speak for three minutes on this upcoming issue. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion District Five, correction, Four. Second District Three, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We're going to recognize Ms. Kim Tucker, the rescinding resolution sixteen dash one one seven regarding authorization of seventy thousand dollars towards drainage issues impacting property on McAllister Drive and Eagles Landing, correction, Eagles Brook subdivision and Lester Mill Road. Ms. Tucker, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. On May third, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution sixteen dash one one seven authorizing seventy thousand from stormwater funds towards a drainage issue along McAllister Road that impacts property owners within the Eagles Brook subdivision, as well as on Lester Mill Road. On June twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, stormwater staff presented limited results for a vegetated swale, and recommended to rescind the resolution. At that time, a motion was made to rescind the resolution, but failed to pass at a three-to-three vote. Subsequently, all impacted property owners met with county staff on July seventh, two thousand and sixteen. It was discussed that we proposed two options to utilize the authorized funds. The purchase and restoration of either one lot, Lot three oh nine, or lot, or two lots, Lots three oh nine and three ten, was discussed and determined that we needed outside engineering. The two-lot option was the only option in which all impacted property owners agreed upon. The estimate for the one-lot purchase was determined to be approximately fifty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars, and the estimated cost for the two-lot option was one hundred and three thousand seventy-six dollars. Additional funding sources needed for the two-lot option was deter, was not determined and remains outstanding. So in light of the estimated thirty-three thousand dollar shortfall for the two-lot option, combined with the fact that stormwater does not service areas on private property outside of a designated drainage area, designated drainage easement, or within a private gated community, the stormwater staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners rescind resolution sixteen dash one one seven.
Anybody have any questions or comments? The only comment that I would make, I'm, I'm programmed to vote to rescind it, because it's a meeting after meeting after meeting, with all the parties involved, it's, appears to be a never-ending story. But having said that, there, I know that many months ago, when I was there, the, I don't know how it got there, I do, it was placed there, obviously, but it was a pipe, and adjacent to whatever, adjacent yard that Mr. Norman lives in, in the backyard, it's, it's a, it's a-
pipe that goes under the patio. And, and, and obviously, without that pipe, it would be a dam, but the pipe, in my mind, is not adequate. And as I understand, I think Building Department, when they went out and looked at that, didn't approve the piping nor the scenario as to how to get water off of one lot through another lot. So I think the concern that some people have out there, number one, is a pipe like that, and that, like most neighborhoods of that nature, is full of children. Now, I know we got culverts all over Henry County that's open, but in the backyard scenario, is it, is, I would like to see somebody address that, maybe on the county level, because I think the county didn't approve that scenario. So consequently, if they didn't approve it, then I don't.
Stormwater never reviewed that pipe?
I think the Building Department is the one that initially went out, and I don't know exactly, I can't remember all the details now, but I do know it was a drainage problem behind Mr. Norman's house and the new house that was being built. Okay, the new house being built had a pretty good significant, I say significant, had a somewhat of a concrete slab patio sitting there. Well, as it went to the back, it has a forty-foot understeer buffer. So consequently, forty-foot understeer means you can't get there, even though the drawing shows a twenty-foot drainage easement within the twenty-foot understeer buffer. That gets confusing to me as well. But anyway, the builder trying to help eliminate that problem, where they already, because of this, it already flooded Mr. Norman's basement once. And this, I don't know exactly how this happened, but that, based on the hydrological study that somebody let me look at one time, it's more water than this pipe will hold. But anyway, I'm just gonna throw that out. So having said that, does anybody else have any comments? For open the floor up for three minutes for people to be heard. If not, I'm gonna open the floor up for three minutes. Anybody like to be heard? If you would, come to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Joseph Norman. I live at twelve sixty-six McAllister Drive. That little black dot there is the pipe that Chairman Smith is talking about. It's a fifteen-inch corrugated pipe. And that's my backyard when it rains more than a spit. That's what I get to look at out my back door. You allowed this because you permitted the man to build a house next door to me. There's a little closer look at the pipe, and I think it's pretty clear from this picture that that lot was allowed to be built considerably elevated than what it was before. It's about, it's about a four-foot elevation increase. Turns my backyard effectively into a retention pond. Remington, stand up. This is my son, Remington. What are we gonna do when it's raining like that and a child gets into that pipe and we have to call the fire department to do a body extraction? You know about this. The person that built that house knows about this. Everyone involved about this in this knows about this. No one wants to do anything. But is it gonna take having the fire department out there and extracting a seven-year-old's body out of that pipe? It's gonna be a little late then. This should never have, this should never have happened in the first place. When the person built this, this house, he knew what he was doing. The building people came out and looked at it, and they knew what was going on. I can't tell you how many discussions I've had with those folks. They knew what was going on. When you authorized the funds to do this, I applauded you for that. Gentlemen, the only thing that any of us has that no one can ever take away from us is our integrity. And our integrity, we give away. And you voted to help us solve this problem that you helped create. And I would just ask you to consider your integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Okay, having said that, you'll afford any commissioner like to have a comment, question? Yes, sir.
Would like to recommend to the Board for us to consider doing an overall grading plan when we do subdivisions. When we design a subdivision, the only thing that we have to design drainage for is the road. And then we do easements on the back and side lots, but we don't do a master grading plan showing where all the water's gonna go when all the houses are in. And I would recommend to this Board to keep from having this happen again in the future, that we maybe get with Ms. Tucker and Wade and take a look at requiring a master grading plan on a subdivision, and it'll keep this from happening again. And I think, I'm really gonna strongly recommend that. I think it's something we need to do just moving forward. And I don't know if I can recommend that, but I'd like to see at least us consider that.
You're putting in a motion to rescind resolution sixteen seventeen. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying that I think we should.
Is that what it is?
I didn't make that motion, I'm just saying we should.
Okay, somebody move in that direction? So you did not make the motion?
I did not make the motion.
Okay. Does somebody want to move in that direction? We got a motion before you that rescind resolution sixteen dash one one seven regarding drainage issues impacting property on McAllister Drive and Eagles Brook. Somebody want to move in that direction?
Chairman, I'm gonna make the motion. I hate to do this, and I understand where you're coming from, and I know you're gonna say integrity, but we permit, Henry County, we permit every project, and we can't, we didn't do the hydrology out there. Our engineers didn't do the hydrology. This is a private matter. I've, I've got a drainage issue on my lot, my neighbor does, my father does. We can't get in the habit of fixing issues on private property. It, it's just too costly. And I hate that, and I apologize to you guys. I know it's a difficult thing to do, and we wanna help everybody, but sometimes we can't with the funds. If we bankrupt the county. So reluctantly, I am gonna make a motion to rescind resolution sixteen.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, the Board of Commissioners rescinding resolution sixteen dash seventeen. Does somebody second that motion? Have a motion District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Resolution approving the purchase of a Kubota Kilo X-ray zero five seven Ford Romeo three excavator. Ms. Tucker, greetings.
Hello. The county, the Henry County Stormwater Management Department was approved to add an additional construction crew, as well as an excavator in the fiscal year sixteen dash seventeen budget. This crew will require an excavator to perform various tasks to maintain the Henry County storm sewer system. Under the first, under the Henry County First Initiative Local Vendor Program, Stormwater would like to purchase one Kubota KX zero five seven dash four R three from Mason Tractor and Equipment Company in the amount of fifty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars, who matched the low bid submitted by the Atlanta Kubota for bid number seventeen dash zero three. Stormwater recommends the purchase, to purchase the equipment from Mason Tractor of McDonough, Georgia, and that all funds are currently available in the account, in the capital and equipment account.
Anybody have, anyone have any question? I yield the floor to District Three.
I just appreciate you and Rod and y'all opening it up to the local companies around here. I'm glad that Mason Tractor got to speed.
Any further comments or question? If not, have a motion to book. Resolution approving the purchase of a Kubota. Have a motion District Three. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution approving the purchase of a Caterpillar, we moving up. Two eighty-nine Delta HF skid loader.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Again, Henry County Stormwater was approved to add a construction crew. This skid steer was also approved in the fiscal budget year sixteen dash seventeen. This crew will require a skid steer to maintain the Henry County storm sewer system. Under state contract nine 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 dash zero one SPD zero 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 one zero two dash zero two five, Yancey Brothers quoted a Caterpillar two eight ninety skid steer in the amount of sixty-nine thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. All funds for the purchase of this skid steer are available in the capital and equipment account.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Have a motion from District Three to approve. Have second. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a twenty seventeen Ford F fifty, F two fifty regular cab and an F two fifty crew cab.
Yes, thank you. Stormwater budget for fiscal year sixteen dash seventeen was approved to include funding towards the purchase of a Ford F one fifty regular cab and a Ford F two fifty regular, or crew cab to replace a Ford Ranger and a Ford F two fifty, which were decommissioned in two thousand and fifteen due to bad transmissions. The replacement of these vehicles is needed for staff transportation to project sites, as well as to water quality testing sites. Stormwater would like to purchase an additional two thousand and seventeen Ford F two fifty crew cab to transport this, the new construction crew to and from sites. The total cost for each truck, the total combined cost for all trucks is ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Stormwater is requesting the Board to authorize the purchase of the two thousand seventeen Ford F one fifty, F two fifty crew cab short bed and the F two fifty crew cab long bed in the amount of ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars under the state contract. And funds are currently available in the vehicle account for Stormwater funds.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Somebody move that we approved a resolution authorizing the purchase?
So move.
Have a motion District Three. Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Excuse me. Next hearing, RZ sixteen dash two, Acorn Property Incorporated of McDonough, Georgia, requests rezoning from RA Residential to C three highway commercial for the property located on the property located at eighteen forty highway eighty-one east in landlot one seventy-one of the seventh district. The property consists of one point eight eight two plus or minus acres, and requests for commercial use. District One, send District One, Mr. Dante Gibbs, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
I yield the floor to District Four.
County Attorney, as everybody can see on the screen there, that's one of my plaits. So as I did this work and have it paid by this gentleman, I'm going to accuse myself.
I suggest you recuse yourself.
So, and the next one after this.
Any doubt? Is that the only one?
No, the next one after this, the second one has my plat as well, so I'm gonna accuse myself.
Okay, you got the second one as well, like RZ sixteen thirteen?
No, just the second part of this.
Oh.
So it'd be this one and the next.
Okay.
So I'll be in the back.
Yes, RZ sixteen and R, sixteen thirteen and RZ sixteen twelve, so it's both of those.
Ten four.
Okay. Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to rezon one point eight eight two plus or minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to C three highway commercial in order to sell the property with no intentions of developing the property currently. And this is according to the letter of, the applicant's letter of intent. The subject property is located within the limited development area of the Tuscaloosa Watershed Protection District and must adhere to section three oh four oh of the UODC, which requires that the lot size in a limited development area for uses of shopping, business or trade activities be a minimum of one point five acres, if serviced by a septic system, which in this case, which is the case for the subject property. The future land use map designates the subject property as low density residential, and therefore the rezoning request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, the, the subject property is located within the Georgia eighty-one at Old Jackson Road Crossroads Activity Center, and is below the five acre or thirty thousand square foot commercial retail or office development threshold that would trigger the need for a master plan, excuse me, of the activity center, per table nine oh one oh three of the UODC. So the, therefore, the typology for the activity center allows for an increase in the acreage of non-residential land uses, meeting the intent of the crossroad activities designation. On July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of denial of C three highway commercial, but approval of C two general commercial with nine conditions. And the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners denial of C three highway commercial and approval of C two general commercial with, with the following nine conditions that I'll place on the overhead. I would like to bring your attention to condition number one, specifically which states the applicant shall donate acreage to or be combined with the site referred to as Track B on the submitted survey dated March twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, so that Track B will have the minimum lot size of one point five acres and or meet all requirements of section three oh four oh oh Watershed Protection District. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Anybody got any comments or questions they'd like to ask this time, District Three?
Dante, on number eight, you know, we're, we're in the process of, through SLOSH and through state, that we actually go maybe four lane wide in eighty-one. Is this sixty-foot right of way? Is it gonna be enough to do that?
That would be a question best answered by DOT, but this condition did come from DOT's review of the submitted case or application.
Okay, she's second to him, yeah, okay.
Where that thing I read that says the application shall donate the right of way required to create a sixty-foot right of way from the existing center at highway eighty-one. That would lead one to believe that the right of way's gonna be a hundred and twenty feet. Is that correct?
If the right of way is sixty feet, yes, the total will be two hundred and twenty. So it'll be sixty feet measured from center line.
That would accept a four lane scenario. Would that be correct?
If my mind is accurate in thinking, yes, but the, not G dot, Henry County DOT would be the best department to answer that question for you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or question? Would the applicant please come forward, please, and present your case? State your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name's Sandra Purie.
Could you get up to the.
My name is.
There you go.
Yeah, my name is Sandra Purie, and it's Archon Properties, actually. Do you need my, our address? We reside at eighteen fifty highway eighty-one east McDonough, and the, and the property he's speaking of now is, is next door. That would be track A.
Okay, anything that you'd add to this at this moment here that you would like for the Board to consider?
Nothing, it's just going all commercial that side.
Okay.
It's only between, there's a CVS next to us where we live on Track B, and there's only maybe one, two, three, five houses between the CVS and another center, which is Castro and Sticky Cactus.
Anybody have any, Commissioner, have any comments to the, or questions to the applicant? I yield the floor to District One.
Dante, really, on the future land use map, Dante, it's, it's not on the future land use map for commercial, correct?
That is correct, the, and I'll put it on overhead for your viewing.
Okay, but it is in the activities, crossroad activities.
That is correct. The parcel hashed in green is the subject parcel. The future land use map by itself designates it low density residential. However, the boundary is the darker gray, or kind of grayish-black boundary as an activity center, which has thresholds that allow for commercial. And so with, given that they have, the activity center has not met the threshold, their request actually is consistent with that.
Super science. Question on that map?
Sure.
That we're considering that. According to that yellow, it's a minimum density residential. And the red is already commercial, is that correct?
No, the red's already.
Okay, you see the red up at Old Jackson Road? Okay, you see the red up at Old Jackson Road?
The yellow is low-density and the, the red is commercial. This is the future land use.
The red, it's already commercial at that intersection.
Future land use, and I'll turn it over so you can see the actual zoning currently.
Okay. I yield the Ford District Three for questions.
So the subject property again is hashed in green and to the west, um, going towards Old Jackson Road, you see majority commercial, uh, several commercial parcels until the east of that track, there's commercial, then O and I, and then commercial again. And this is the current zoning.
That right there depicts the current zoning.
Yes.
So we looking at C-two, we're looking at, uh, two lots and a flag lot, and then past that, we looking at, uh, C-three? Is that, uh, what, what, what is that right, right there? What's that zoning?
Right here where my, where my pen is co- is located?
Yes.
This is zone C, C-two.
C-two?
Yes.
C-two, okay. So that's the current zoning right now.
Right here.
As we look at that, that's what is zoned. Okay, I yield the Ford District Three for a question.
I know y'all had asked for C-three. Are y'all agreeable to the C-two?
Yes, sir. But, uh, we didn't understand when we applied, so when I spoke with, um, um, at the zoning office, uh, they explained to me what's the difference, and, and yeah, C-two is fine.
Okay, anybody else got any questions? If not, I'm gonna open the floor up for anybody that would like to speak in favor of this proposed project. If you would, uh, you have ten minutes total. Uh, if you have one person speak ten minutes, or you have, uh, ten people speak for one minute. So I'm gonna open the floor up for the public hearing portion. If you would come to the podium and state your name, please. This is people who's in favor of this. Seeing none, hearing none, I now open the floor for ten minutes for people that oppose this, uh, request, uh, rezoning. So if you address the podium, you'll have ten minutes, uh, as a group. State your name for the record. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare that the public hearing portion, uh, has required RZ sixteen dash twelve, uh, has been approved, has been met, and I would like for the applicant to come back forward, please. The planning and zoning board recommended denial of zoning requests from RA Residential, uh, to C-three, have a commercial. And instead, the planning and zoning board approved of C-two, even though you didn't ask for C-two, uh, general commercial on July the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen would have fallen conditions, and they have, uh, nine conditions. Now, uh, in the event that, would you be agreeable for this board to approve the rezoning of this land from RA to C-two with the nine conditions? Would you be agreeable to, to that rezoning?
Yes, that, that's fine.
Okay. Having said that, will somebody want to move in that direction?
We'll make a motion to, uh, go with, uh, the planning and zoning board to deny C-three and approve C-two.
Okay, with nine conditions. Nine conditions, good. Any further discussion? Need a second. Second, Second District, uh, Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. So moved. Public hearing, RZ sixteen dash thirteen, uh, for RA Residential C-three Highway for the property located at eighteen fifty, uh, Highway eighty-one East Land Lot one-seventy-one of the Seventh District, property consists of one point two-three, and the request is for commercial use only. Dante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this, the applicant is requesting to rezone the property next to the previous case, uh, property, subject property of the previous case. And, um, they're asking to rezone one point two-three-nine plus or minus acres from RA to C-three, and that's residential agricultural to highway commercial. And the subject property is also located in the limited development area of Tussle Hall Watershed Protection District and is below the required minimum one point five acres for property having a septic system and will need to obtain additional acres to develop as commercial and be in compliance with the ULDC. This property abuts the subject property of the previous case as stated and is also located within the Georgia eighty-one and Old Jackson Road Crossroads Activity Center. And given the typology of this activity center, it allows for an increase in the acreage of non-residential land uses. Therefore, on, on July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of denial of C-three Highway Commercial, uh, but approval of C-two general commercial with the same nine conditions as before, with the exception of condition number one, and I place that on the overhead. And the, um, zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners denial of C-three and approval of C-two with the following nine conditions. And for the record, condition number one reads, the property shall be combined with or obtained acreage to have a minimum lot size of one point five acres and or meet all requirements of section three oh four oh oh of the Watershed Protection District. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions, comments? Would the applicant please come forward, please? Could you state your case, please?
Yes, sir. Um, uh, we live right next to CVS, and I know that our lot is a little bit small, but it, it is our intention to sell both lots together.
Okay, anybody got any questions or comments for the applicant? Any ready, any further comments? Okay. This requires a public hearing. I'm gonna allow, uh, the people, uh, ten minutes that would be in favor or oppose this, so I'm gonna put the clock on for ten minutes. Anybody that's, uh, in favor of this, please come to the podium and state your name, and you'll have ten minutes. I say again, this is a public hearing. People will be heard for ten minutes in favor of it. Seeing none, uh, I now open the floor for ten minutes for citizens that would like to approach the bench and have ten minutes to oppose this project, oppose this rezoning. I say again, the floor is open. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare that the public hearing portion of RZ sixteen dash thirteen has been met. Uh, for the applicant, the zoning advisory board recommended denial of the, uh, rezoning request from RA to residential agricultural to C-three. Now, the, what this board, I think, is probably prepared to do, that instead they, uh, the planning board recommended approval of C-two, which you did not request, uh, general commercial on July the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen would have fallen conditions. Now, would you find it acceptable, would you accept the fact that this board would rezone this particular piece of property from RA to C-two and agreeable to the nine conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Having said that, I open the floor for anybody who wants to.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Have a motion District One, Second District, uh, Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. So moved. Thank you. Does that mean the Commissioner, the President can come back now? Public hearing, RZ sixteen dash fourteen, Ola Ventures LLC requests rezoning from RA Residential to, to R-one Single Family Residential for the property located east side of Ola Road and Timber Ridge Drive. The, uh, land is in, uh, Land Lot one-one-two of the Eighth District. The property consists of fourteen point three zero-two plus or minus acres, and the request is for minor subdivision. Mr. Dante, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. You don't mind being with me for just a moment.
Good evening. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezone fourteen point three zero-two plus or minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to R-one Single Family Residential for the purpose of developing a minor subdivision. The applicant is proposing twelve lots, yielding a net density of one unit per acre, which is consistent with the future land use map designation of the property as rural residential having a density less than or equal to one unit per acre. The development of the subject property as a single-family residential minor subdivision is consistent with the purpose of the R-one zoning district, which is intended to provide for detached single-family residential dwellings that are either site-built or industrialized on, on lots. Per section four oh four oh two B, lot divisions that do not require the installation of streets, utilities, or other public improvements and infrastructure are considered minor subdivisions. Now, that section of our ULDC has recently been amended, but this is what they were vested in under when they submit, rendered application to the county. So on July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agricultural to R-one Single Family Residential with six conditions. And the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners approval of the applicant's request with the following six conditions, and I'll place them on, on the overhead.
Anywhere has a question? Go ahead. Continue.
Condition number one, all houses shall be built on-site, no modular or manufactured homes. The minimum heated floor area shall be two thousand square feet. Number two, each home shall have, have two-car garage standard and will be side entry. Number three, all homes shall consist of all-size brick, stone, stucco, or any combination of two or more of the following materials on all sides: brick, stone, stucco, or cement fiber board. Vinyl-based products are only permitted in the soffits, eaves, and phasia. Number four, any disturbed areas for construction and septic field lines on these lots shall be replaced with new sod. The owner has already deeded right-of-way for the future improvement of North Ola Road. That's condition number five as information. And number six, all proposed intersections and/or driveways are to be located such that each me- each meets the minimum intersection standards as determined by the Henry County Department of Transportation, including slight distance per the road's posted speed limit. Driveways shall be addressed during the planning view process by the Henry County DOT and the Henry, per or and, Henry County DOT standards. Be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Dante? Okay, thank you. Uh, I would ask the applicant to come forward, please. State your name for the record and, uh, submit your case, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Uh, my name is Terry Echols. Uh, I live at twenty-one thirty-four North Ola Road in McDonough, Georgia. Um, here representing Ola Ventures. Um, any questions that you have, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody got any comments or questions? I yield the Ford District Three.
Mr. Echols, all addition four. Uh, would you have any objections to add that all front yards have to be sodded?
Mr. Borum, I do not have any objection to that.
I don't have any further questions. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Uh, if not, this constitutes a, uh, public hearing. I will now open the floor up for ten minutes. People that is speaking, uh, in favor of this, if you would, uh, come to the podium and give your name, and the group will be allowed ten minutes. Uh, I announce again, this is a time, if you approve this, favor this, uh, rezoning, is come forward. Seeing none, hearing none, I now open the floor up for ten minutes, uh, total for people that is in opposition of this. If you would, uh, come to the podium and, uh, state your name for the record, please. Now state again, this is a time, if you have any opposition, is come forward. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Leon Shirley. I live at seven thirty North Ola Road. My property will butt up against the backside of this property, and the concern I have is we're opening this up for twelve houses to be built, but there's still quite a bit of other properties right behind it, as you can see, it comes on around. Now, same thing kinda happened up on snapping shows a few years back, and now we've got a couple hundred houses up there, and I'm afraid that's what's fixing to happen here just as soon as those twelve get there, and there's gonna be another hundred or a hundred and twenty houses put in there, and it's gonna back right up to my property that goes down Dunkin' Drive. That's a very, very serious concern of mine. It's seventy years old. How can I protect myself down there in the, in the country? So if you give them that right there, can we put something in there that says they're not gonna take the rest of that? Uh, I don't know how many acres it is, hundred-plus acres maybe? I don't know how much is actually there. And then six months from now, a year from now, you're gonna have a hundred and twenty houses in there instead of those twelve? Thank you very much.
Let, let me bring this out. Uh, you, you own the land, uh, uh, to the east of this, the whole back of that, is that correct?
On the back right in here.
Oh, okay. I, I, I thought maybe you owned the, the, the vast majority.
This, this property turns and goes around.
Oh, I got, so you do own behind all those. Okay, noticing here, it's not too plain, but, uh...
No, he don't, he don't own that. He owns right here, on the end.
On the end.
On the end.
Okay, I, I can, okay. Reason I bring that up, it, it appears that the developer, uh, might be self-interested on the back part, but has allowed some land, uh, like if you, if you go to the north, like one, two, three, lot three, between three and four, you got a inch away, and it appears that they've got ample right-of-way to open that area up, uh, uh, to the, to the east across from whatever the name of that street is. I can't read it, it's very blurry online. But, uh, a- anyway, I, I just brought that up. Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Anybody else like to be heard in opposition of this at this moment? Uh, if not, I conclude that the, uh, public hearing of RZ sixteen fourteen requirement has been met, and anybody got any further questions for, uh, Dante? Will the applicant please come forward? The planning and zoning board approved the, um, the rezoning of this land from RA to R-one with six conditions. Uh, item five, the owner has already, well, which one did you say? Four? Okay.
Yes, I wanted to.
Okay, four.
When I make a motion, I'll, uh...
Okay. Would you, do you find these, uh, in the event that the zoning finds us, uh, the board finds us favorable, would you, uh, accept the six conditions, one being modified, number four about the sod? Would you find these six conditions acceptable?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Having said that, I'll open the floor. If anybody wants to ask questions or...
I'm ready for a question.
Well, whose district's that in? Yours?
Mine.
Okay. I yield the Ford District Three.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we rezone from RA to R-one Single Family Residential for the property located on the east side of North Ola Road at Timber Ridge Drive in Land Lot one-twelve of the Eighth District. The property consists of fourteen point three oh-two plus acres, and the request is a for minor subdivision with all the conditions. And on number four, I'd like to amend that condition to add that all front yards have to be completely sodded.
We have a motion, somebody second it? We have a second. We have a motion on the floor. Uh, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. So moved. Thank you. Public hearing, RZ sixteen dash fifteen, uh, we partner Car Parker one-on-one LLC of Lawrence Field, Georgia, request revision from R-one Single Family Residential to RA Residential for the located, uh, south and east, Car Parker Road, Land Lot one-thirty-five, one-fifty-four. The Sixth District property consists of ninety-nine point nine-eight plus or minus acres, and there is no proposed development at this time. Mr. Gibbs, it's you again.
Me again, Mr. Chairman. I guarantee this, this is the last one for tonight. The applicant is requesting a reversion of the subject property from R-one Single Family Residential to RA Residential Agricultural, per ULDC section twelve zero zero zero-three A-three, which states if no substantial construction or alteration of the property or affirmative action to develop the property has occurred within eighteen months of the granting of an application for rezoning, the zoning advisory board may review the situation and report its findings with recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, who may at a public hearing change the zoning category to its prior or other appropriate zoning district classifications. And according to our records in planning and zoning, the subject property has been zoned R-one since at least December sixteenth, two thousand and three, when the official Henry County zoning map was adopted by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Henry County zoning map was adopted by the Henry County Board of Commissioners at that time. The applicant is requesting that the property be reverted back to their R A zoning classification, given that the development activity, given that the development activity has not occurred. On July fourteenth, twenty sixteen, staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval of the applicant's request to revert back to R A residential agricultural with one condition. And the zoning advisory board recommends to the board of commissioners approval of the applicant's request with the following condition, and I'll place it on, on the overhead, and then I'll read it. If the subject property is later developed, the development and out parcels must provide attenuation, water quality, channel protection, overbank, and extreme flood, as well as meeting all other applicable codes covering water runoff and development. Be happy to answer any questions at this, this time.
Anybody have any comments or questions for Gibbs? I yield the floor to District Four.
Dante, wouldn't this apply anyway? If they did an R A subdivision, does they still have to do water quality and all that stuff?
Yes, but we wanted to make sure.
Okay. I yield the floor.
Anybody else got any questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none, uh, would the applicant please come forward, please? And state your case, please.
Good evening, Board. My name is Wanda Moore, I'm with Falcon Design Consultants, and I'm here to represent the applicant, uh, for the, uh, reversion of the zoning from R one to R A, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions for applicant? Any comments? Uh, thank you. Uh, this constitutes, this requires a, uh, public hearing, R Z sixteen dash fifteen. I will open the floor for fifteen minutes, anybody like to be heard in, uh, uh, approval of this rezoning request. So, if you would, uh, interested in it, come to the podium, state your name, uh, for the record, and you'll have, uh, as a group, ten minutes. I state the second time, the public hearing is now in progress for people in, uh, favor of this. Having seen none, heard none, I now open the floor up for ten minutes for anyone that would like to oppose, uh, this rezoning request, so if you would, uh, come to the podium, state your name, and, uh, for the record, and, uh, you'll have, uh, ten minutes, or everybody will have ten minutes. Yes, sir.
My name is Pete Franson, I live on Bazmill Road. Uh, I'm not sure if I'm actually opposed to it, but I do have questions. The question is, like you said, that one restriction, that's the norm anyway. The thing is, what's the minimum square foot house they can build on R A? Isn't it fifteen hundred square feet? And no stipulations on what the exterior or whatever is? Or, uh, from, an R A? Cause I, we've already seen what R one is.
Right. I, I think R A, is it, it's either twelve or fifteen. Is, is George here? Dante, do you remember off the top of your head? House size?
Correct. That, that, that was the whole point I was getting...
I think it's fifteen, I think you're all right, it's fifteen, minimal.
That's the whole point I was getting towards, because it was a development directly across the road, and I don't live there, but I feel really bad for them if you put a fifteen-hundred square foot slab out there and put a, a ranch house up with vinyl siding and depreciated their values. I mean, I don't have, I'm not here to stop them from building houses, but hold the bar up a little bit, that's all we're asking.
Um, now, this is District Two, and there's no District Two Commissioner, so...
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, I, I don't know the intent, and I'd have to ask the applicant what their intent is, and I don't...
Well, the thing about that is, the thing about a developer is, they sell lots, they go in, put roads in, utilities in, they sell lots. Technically, they don't have an intent, the builder will have an intent, whatever it's sewn at. That is the question. And I don't want to see you, I, I really don't wanna see you hurt the property values around there.
Yeah, I understand. I, I just don't know, it's not typically something we do, I mean, on...
I'm not here to stop them from building houses, I don't have a problem with that, just hold the bar up a little bit.
Yeah, on, that's the issue we have with R A, I, I don't have a lot of reach with it. Now, that I'd have to talk to Dante, I, I've never put a restriction or anything on an R A development before, I, I wouldn't know, could you even do that?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Could you put a restriction on R A zoning, because everything's blanket R A?
There's no proposed development, uh, on this property, they're just looking to revert it back to R A, um...
Cause I, I believe I had heard they were gonna put this into conservation, is what I had believed, I had heard, and once it goes to conservation...
Can you, can you get him to put that in writing?
Well, I, I can't make... Again, you know, what can the government do? How much can we reach out and touch somebody?
The applicant would be best to answer that conservation question, but to answer your previous question about the minimum square footage on a house, in R A is fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, okay, I can remember.
That's what I thought.
But there is no, it's fifteen hundred, and we can't control siding?
Exactly.
I mean, you, you, it, bare minimum.
Well, that, that, that's the reason it serves as a purpose to benefit them and not everyone around them, and when they sell the lots off, we're left with it.
Sure, I understand, but I, I just don't know how to, with R A, it...
It's still acre, you know, R one and R A is an acre property.
Now, no, R A's, it's two acre.
If they were to develop an R A subdivision, the minimum acreage for each lot is two acres, currently.
If it goes up to two acres, yeah.
Yes.
So, your lot yield goes in half?
Yeah.
So, again, it gets real hard for me to put, you know, what, it comes down to, what would you rather have, a whole lot, twice as many homes, a little bit bigger, or half as many homes?
I think I would, because it would keep the property values up.
And again, I, I just don't know if I can reach out and, and do that.
Well, right, right, directly across the road is R one, and ha, that's full of houses.
Sure.
And if you go back down Bazmill Road, in fact, the lady that owns all the property behind it, sitting right there, and she lives in a very nice home, she don't wanna see her values diminished either.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
We're looking to...
Yes, sir. Uh, this, this is a public hearing portion. Uh, you wanna wait till we see if anybody else wants to speak, then I'll open it up for comments or questions to Dante? Will that work? Anybody else like to be heard at this time, in opposition to this request? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing, I'm gonna indicate that the public hearing, uh, requirement for R Z sixteen dash fifteen has been met, and now you'll afford a District One for a question to the distinguished, uh, Dante.
An R one, the minimum square footage is two thousand square feet, is that correct?
No, sir. For, on, on a house, an R one is fifteen hundred, same as R A.
Oh, okay, all right.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Would the applicant please come forward again, please? I yield the floor to District Four.
Um, I, I tell you what, I think Jim's got a point. Can we do that, Dante? Can I, on an R A? Can we say a minimum house size tied to this piece of property?
Technically, the board of commissioners can, can make a motion and condition properties at their discretion, um, and it may be better to have our legal counsel to add some additional clarity to that.
My, my question would be this, were, were there house size restrictions on the previous zoning?
No, it was R one, and technically, if, if it remained R one, they could develop it as the gentleman, um, spoken opposition indicated, vinyl siding with no conditions.
So, and there was no conditions at all before?
I, I can't see how I can ju, how you can justify putting new conditions on the property...
And there's no intent for them to develop.
And there's fewer, well, there'd be fewer of the exact same kinda homes they could already develop. I, I don't see how you're offsetting a harm. They could, if they could already put fifteen-hundred square foot vinyl houses as it's presently zoned...
Okay.
If you rezone it, they can only do fewer fifteen-hundred square foot vinyl houses. I don't see what harm you're fixing.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else have any comments? Yes, ma'am. You have any comments?
I was just gonna say, the application, uh, was for the property owner to revert, uh, the property back to its original zoning classification, which is R A, which has the same, um, square footage of house, but the R A, um, zoning classification of the original, um, zoning, before he got it rezoned. Obviously, the property owner has changed through the years, but, um, that's the application. And there's no plans, um, for the property to be developed, and if there are, um, with the rezoning, is there a timeframe that you have to wait to even try to rezone it? If you try to rezone it again, to, you know?
If a rezoning is denied by the board of commissioners, then they have to wait a year before they can apply again. Um, but technically, if it's approved, uh, there's no clause in our code that prevents them from trying to rezone the property again soon thereafter.
To approve the rezoning, and again, they can already build fifteen-hundred square foot houses now, so we're just cutting how many they can do. And, uh, with the one condition, which they, you know, they're already required to that one condition anyway, but, so I'm gonna recommend approval, um, from R one to R A, um, with the one condition as stated by the zoning advisory board.
What was the motion?
To approve R A.
Okay. We'll go to approve R A, have a second? Have a second, District Three. Uh, for discussion, which is not a discussion, comments, I, I, I have been affiliated with zoning for probably a good thirty-five, forty years, and this, this is the first I've ever seen that somebody wants to take something and take back to R A, which is like the grandmother of all the zonings. And, um, I know that if you've been before here, and with the board in the last four years, it's always wanting to take R A and do something else to it, and, and it seems like the protective covenant was to, to be R A, and now, uh, I'm in favor of it, so all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. County Manager, uh, B. I can present this, I can bring it up, uh, it's, I'll just take care of this. At the last recent meeting, which I was not absent, I was not here, I was absent, the board adopted a resolution to approve the hiring of a, um, professional services lobbyist on, on the state level, and needless to say, I was not here, and they, they should've took care of the amendment at that time, uh, budget, but didn't. But having said that, uh, the, the comments that I would make, I was the executive assistant to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, uh, under previous board of commissioners up here, and they hired a, a lobbyist on the state level, and it didn't, it didn't turn out too good, and, uh, reason being, it kinda hit a nerve with some of the, uh, local, uh, uh, delegated legislators, and I know if, if I was a, a state rep or state senator, I, I would like to think that I would be the best lobbyist, the best cheerleader for the Henry County Board of Commissioners and the citizens of, uh, Henry County to deal with state and, uh, agencies and, and state departments. Uh, so, uh, uh, I also remember that during that same timeframe, the board, at that time, hired a federal lobbyist, and, uh, best that I can recall, they paid this guy a hundred thousand dollars a year, and I think, uh, the first year, he was successful, or got credit for bringing in, uh, five million dollars back to, uh, Henry County. So, uh, having said that, I would, I'd definitely be on board to consider, uh, paying even more money for a, uh, federal lobbyist, but I, I just, uh, can't go along with, uh, hiring a local lobbyist on the local level. So, having said that, there is a motion, would be in order, for a resolution for the Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen budget, to add the twenty-two thousand dollar increase for the fund balance to increase the professional business account. So, having said that, I would yield the floor to anybody, District Four.
Statement. Um, I believe the, if I'm not mistaken, we had a meeting with the lobbyist and the director of D O T, and I, I believe he got his seventy-two million dollars last week already? Is that right? Seventy-two million? That's a pretty good investment, I think. We've got, do you wanna do it, Gary, or you wanna...
You, you're sending a seventy-two million dollar to...
Yes, sir, Gary will...
We haven't paid him yet, and he's already brought seventy-two million dollars back to Henry County by himself.
Yes, sir, by himself, yes, sir. Well, we were there.
If, if that's the case, I, I stand to be corrected.
Well, let Gary, I think he's got it.
Well, I, I've got the numbers here, and, and you mentioned the, uh, local legislators, you know, we reached out to all the legislators, um, Emmanuel Jones, I tried to reach out to him twice and was not successful, but I did talk to Demetrius Douglas, and I talked to Rick Jeffries, Dale Rutledge, Andy Welch, and Brian Strickland, and, uh, they all thought it was a great thing to, uh, to have somebody represent Henry County, because, uh, you know, some of these counties, like Cobb County, some of these counties have three or four lobbyists. Now, William Woodall has an office right here in McDonough, he represents some other counties, I don't know which county it is, but I know he represents some other counties, and, um, he got Jay Roberts down here, and, uh, Ms. Matthews was at the meeting, and, uh, he's exactly right, we got a seventeen million dollar project added to, uh, the state list last week with, uh, Jay Roberts and William Woodall. And, uh, the, the location of this project is one fifty-five. Now, I know some of you'll be happy about that, but they're talking about four-laning from Bill Gardner all the way back to seventy-five, and this is a new project that was added last week. So, uh, we'll just have to see where it goes from here, but anyway, let's start on that pass.
So, you're telling me that this lobbyist has already, can do something that our state legislators can't do?
Well, I don't...
Is that basically what you're saying?
We got, we got some, he got Jay Roberts down here in, in a week's time. And he's the man, Jay Roberts is the man.
I, I, I understand that, but the deal is, is, if I, I'm just saying this, and I qualify this, if I was a state representative or state senator, I, I'd have a real big problem with y'all getting somebody to lobby against me, because I would want to be the best cheerleader and the best, uh, hunt of funding that anything the state has, and it seems like to me, I would have a inside track, because I would, I would be at, at the gold dome, so...
As well, and, um, um, it seems like, um, both the lobbyist and Jay Roberts work pretty closely with our, um, our delegation, and, um, he did confirm to me that, um, they did get the, uh, one, was it one fifty-five? That they got that pro, that, um, that road programmed, uh, into, um, into the budget.
And what we ought to do, just get rid of our reps and our senator, right?
The way they talk, within five years, this project will be complete, so...
Okay, well, that's all I have. Anybody else like to discuss it? Uh, there's a resolution on the floor, as I just mentioned, somebody wanna move in that direction?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Have a motion in District Four to approve, any second?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Approval of the minutes for July the twentieth, twenty sixteen, mid-chair, nine-thirty and six-thirty, P, PM. Uh, July the twenty-seventh, mid-chair, here in adoption, six-thirty. August the second, twenty sixteen, it was a regular board meeting. Uh, chairman and commission comment, I don't know exactly where I started last time, but I'll, I'll, this time, you have any comments? District Five, you have any comments? You have any comments? We're down on that part on the budget, not on the agenda. How about District Three?
I don't have any comments.
Did you vote on? Did we vote on what? The minutes. The what? Anyway, vote on everything. Okay, I just, I just read the, uh, minutes, has somebody moved, we approved the minutes as read?
Move to break.
Okay. Have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Now, Commissioner Holmes, would you like to have the floor?
No comments.
District Three, District One, District Four, Chairman, none. County Manager, any comments?
I have a few updates and a couple of comments for the board of county commissioners, sir. Uh, the first one is, I would like to, um, uh, get some dates from the board. I met with Judge Amaro and Judge Studdard, Commissioner Prince and I, uh, traveled down to, to the courthouses, and we discussed the national centers, uh, the state court facilities needs assessment that the board of county commissioners have approved. Uh, this was a study of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars that are going to study the needs for the judicial system in Henry County for thirty years. Uh, Commissioner Prince and, and I met with the judge, uh, the, the two judges, kinda laid out the framework about who's doing what in accordance with the, our understanding of what the scope of services are. Um, uh, clearly, the scope of services that I sent to the board, it is a joint project between the judges, the judicial, and the board of county commissioners, and we'd like to utilize y'all as a steering group, and we, meaning the staff of both of the two steering group parties, um, are going to meet and do, be the work part of it. I'm gonna need some dates from the board of county commissioners to, uh, now have Mrs. Weaver call you tomorrow, but I want y'all to look in the latter part of this month, and certainly the beginning of September, to have... and certainly the beginning of September, to have our kickoff meeting in conjunction with the judges. So as a steering group, you'll know where we're at. We're updating some things now that are going on, but I need to get y'all up to speed and know what the deliverables, what the expectations are from the scope of service from the Board of County Commissioners and the judges. So Ms. Weaver will be sending out an email tomorrow, try to get some dates scheduled, coordinate that with the judges, and we'll get this project underway. We've got a short fuse on this project. It's 26 weeks, and the scope of services has already been expanded, and y'all have not met yet. So we're going to have to manage this very closely. Ms. Matthews, myself, and Mr. Burkhalter are going to serve as liaison from the staff side. Every one of the staff's disciplines will be involved in review and the participation in the agreement. On the other side, if you will, Mr. Will Simmons is representing the judges in a work group. But pay attention tomorrow and tonight, start looking at your calendars. We're going to need some dates pretty quick to get y'all up to speed and understand why this is so important. This has turned out to be a 30-year plan, and it's got legs that are far-reaching for Henry County. On August 5th, Ms. Matthews and I traveled down to Athens and participated in SDS preparation class put on by ACCG. Extraordinary good class. It was a kickoff meeting for a lot of the counties. We learned a lot. We took a lot away. I think the overall theme I've got from it is preparation, preparation, preparation. We've already started assembling some of the documents we're going to need. Obviously, we've got copies of the SDS, but it's a whole new round. And the fact is that we may not be due for another year, but there's a lot of work we need to get started on right now to capture what the board's interests are in making certain we are advocating what the position is to the cities on a whole. This SDS is another long-legged thing, so it's a long-term project. I want you to know we're getting started on that part. As the board will recall, I had a number of, I guess, the PAFs, if you will, position, the appraisals, and the documents that we use to transfer, bring people in, or give them promotions, PAFs. And in that, it has traditionally been spring-loaded that the promotional dollars or the increased enhancements for bringing in certificates or assuming additional responsibilities, it's always been the 5%. It's been the 5% rule not so ever seen. Well, the problem with that for me was twofold. One, the 5% was never adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. It is at the discretion of the county manager. And as far as back as we can find on local records, every county manager has gone with the 5%. The second part of that problem is when you give a 5% salary raise, for whatever reason, it doesn't account for anything other than wages. And if the board will recall, when you adjust wages, it affects everything else that are in your renumeration's relative benefits. You know, what your pension will be, all those other things that are beyond and are dependent upon wages to be calculated. So I've struggled with it during the budget to find out exactly in our mind how we're going to project this going forward. And Mrs. Patterson, Mrs. Sorrow, Mrs. Matthews, and I've been banging our head on this for a while. We've got a draft in front of us that I'm going to bring back to the board next week with a couple of modifications. It gives us a standard to go by that removes some of the discretionary calls of it, that will track the true cost of the increases and be able to model these expenditures going through time as part of your capital planning programs. So that'll be on the next agenda. Just remember it as the 5% rule. We'll be meeting, and we had a meeting today, and I've got another one set up regarding the Phillips Drive building. We're going to ask the board, Ms. Weaver will be sending out some dates to you tomorrow, to come back and let's take a look at the capital program that we put out before you some time back. We've got some pressing issues that came in through the last agenda. We had to pull it tonight to get it straightened up. We need to have the board to decide what of the capital projects are going to be the priority for you. Staff prioritized some back in March. We've given them to you, went through the capital plan. And now we need to get the board to fund which one is our higher priority. We have Phillips Drive, we have some roofs that are highest priority, but overall, we want to bring y'all together in a room, and Commissioner Barham and I had a meeting with staff this morning with that, and just getting the first three or four top priorities out of way that are going to be capital investments. We think that the best thing is to get you in a room and let you hear the shell game that we did in the past. And I don't mean by describing anything, this mean about getting our ducks lined up so we can pull the trigger and actually get some of these projects on pipe. What's the board's fingerprint on that? So we're going to try to do that the first week in September after Labor Day, and I want to try to get two or three dates for you to line up. Ms. Weaver will be calling on that for you tomorrow. But we'll call that the capital planning meeting. As the board knows, we're going to ask the chairman tonight to execute the agreements whereby the hangers that have been conveyed to Henry County from a financial institution, that should be the step, last step we can take, we'll transmit that back to the financial institution, and we should be getting some ownership documentation in fee simple shortly thereafter. So we've been working on it. Mr. Purvis has sent a crew out there. I think all of y'all have been out there at some point in time to know the property. This is an extraordinary opportunity for Henry County. I'm very pleased with where we're going. Mr. Prince and I have talked to some potential leases. At this point, we're trying to get you a fair valuation of what the square foot cost would be, what we should be charging for that facility. And I want, the chairman hasn't been out there in a while, but this is the only ones that are out there that are fully suppressed at the size of the building we are for fire suppression and security. Extraordinary good opportunity for the county, just being at the right place at the right time. We'll be bringing back some prices of local comparison, but we're going to bring a professional consultant on the board to tell us what this executive type of hanger was, be worth, and where's our clients we want to start marketing to, to bring in. We've got some alternatives, but I'm really pleased that we've got this, and as soon as we get those documents back, we will start some of the capital work that needs to be in there. We've got two that are, we've got one that's ready to lease right now. We technically could have released it if I had a floor pan and agreement for plan in the agreement with the board. There's a second one that'll come online a few weeks from now, and the third one's going to be a few weeks out. So I'm really, really pleased about that. And this morning, I threw down on the city of McDonough, and on the behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we challenged them to a golf tournament. Mayor Copeland was well receptive. Think it'll do a little something on the side, just to get us some fun and start working toward some other projects that we have going on with the city. I'll probably do the same thing, taking advantage of having the two boards get to meet, get to spend some time, start thinking about what we're going to be doing in the next five and 10-year planning windows with the municipalities. And Commissioners, do you have any questions for me? That completes what I have for you this evening.
We're going to have these golf tournaments at Eagle Landing?
No. There's another course that I've started favoring as of recent chairman, and we've got some inside foot there for some rates and whatnot. And I think we'll probably be at the lovely Cottonfields facility in Henry County.
Thank you. County Attorney, you have any comments?